Meeting to order. This is the regular Tuesday, November 19 meeting of the Pownell Vermont Planning Commission. Jim, you're rolling. Welcome, everybody. I'm just going to give you a brief overview for everybody at home of our agenda for this evening. We're going to, once I read this agenda, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve it. Then I'm going to ask everybody to introduce themselves. We have to approve our meeting minutes of October 22. I think we have enough people here that attended that to be able to do that. There she is. We are going to have a presentation, a slideshow presentation. Yeah, it's like your vacation.
Yeah, my vacation.
By Michael Batchelor. Welcome back, Michael Batchelor, VCR C. We're going to, with Jim and Michael, or at least for Jim, review Section 8 of the town bylaws. Just tonight, these guys, Duncan Cooper Campbell, has some rare disease that children bring him in daycare, like sore throats in the stomach or something. So he could not come down. On our new business, we're going to talk a little bit more about the flood hazard and flood maps that might have been rolled in. We're going to turn Jim Sullivan loose on 8 through, or pretty much, Section 8. Whatever. He's ready. Which includes parking, mobile home parks, performance standards, lighting, air qualities, stormwater and erosion control, building and site design. And there is no other, if there is no other business at that time. We have one piece of mail that I've managed to lose, and I will...
Take it out.
It's a bill, I can tell. But I'll, so with that, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
You have such a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion of the agenda? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Could we start down there? Take a look at the camera. Tell them who you are. Let's just go right around, including the VCR C guys.
Rose Marie Colletier, Pownell Planning Commission member.
John Sheik.
Jessica Wither.
Mike Slattery.
I'm Michael Batchelor with the Benton County Regional Commission.
And Jim Sullivan with the Benton County Regional Commission also.
I'm Barbara Tru Webber on the Planning Commission. Michelle Duckrode.
Sid Smithers, Planning Commission.
Megan Randall, Planning Commission.
Joe Winchester, Planning Commission.
Thank you all. Patricia, you don't have to introduce yourself. You're okay. Okay. Let's introduce our first guest, who really needs no introduction. We all, oh, yeah, let's do the minutes first. I was so anxious to get to the slideshow.
I know.
Just take a few minutes to look at the...
It's like being in the sixth grade and starting to show up. Oh, my God, a slideshow.
All right, let's take a look at these. This actually was a special meeting, and what made it special was that we changed the date by a week. So when we say approval of regular minutes here, let's just change that to special meeting minutes. On the agenda, already catch that before, but I just remember it when it's correctly listed on the minute. So take a look at that, and when everybody's had a minute, I'll let her take a motion up. Approve it.
I move to approve the minute. Yeah, for the second.
On second?
I'll second him. Second the motion.
Any further discussion on the minutes? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed.
Abstain.
And you abstain. So Sid abstained, Shell abstained. So do we have enough? One, two, three, four, five, six. Do we have enough to pass it? Excellent. All right. Thank you. Now, without further ado, bring back our old friend, Michael Batchelor, who gave us such great guidance in the creation of our town plan. He's back to talk to us about our flood problems.
Just to put it in context with the bylaw, so we basically finished our first review of Sections 1 through 5 and, well, 6, too. We're basically moving a couple of parts from Section 6 into Section 8. So we're left at the point where we need to talk about the updated flood hazard area regulations, which would probably become Section 6 of the new draft of the bylaw. And so Michael was good enough to put some information together about the flood hazard, the flood hazard regs background and regulatory stuff, as well as the, what river corridor regulations are about, so we get into that discussion. And I would just like to say, in that context, too, is I know Michael has some zoning map stuff up, too, because there's a couple of zoning map changes, you know, to consider. And I think we've kind of incorporated some of them already in what we've talked about. But one of them that I haven't talked about yet, but overlaps with this discussion a bit, is the zoning designation for the racetrack property. So I think it would be a good amount to talk about that tonight, too.
I agree.
Okay.
Jim, could I suggest that you pull your chair back a little bit so that you can see the screen?
That's going to be in my way.
I looked at twice. Did we see okay? Good. So your flood regulations are a bit old, and the Vermont Agency of Natural Resources, which has a rivers management program, has developed some model regulations, but you're hoping we could adapt for Pownell. And what I thought I would do is kind of give you the big view of what those are about, and also show you where some of these areas, these flood zones and river corridors, might fall on your landscape. So this is sort of a dual thing, right? PowerPoint presentation, but I've also brought a, I have a geographic information system, so I can zoom in, put all kinds of stuff up and down. So it's a lot easier than throwing out paper maps and that kind of stuff. So I thought we'd go, so this is just, is sort of an introduction slide.
This is to get your attention, right?
This is to get your attention.
Is this in Pownell?
No, it's not Pownell, but it's Pushed Irene. These are Irenes. So they didn't occur in Pownell, but they occurred somewhere in Vermont. So this is kind of, describes what a floodplain is about. And the floodplain is that area that you have a normal channel, okay? But when you get to what's called the 100-year flood, or the flood that most likely occurred in 1% of cases, it would fill an area roughly that size. And the technical term for that is the base flood elevation. They think the 100-year floodplain is the base flood. This is something FEMA came up with many, many years ago. Now, beyond that, there's also a 500-year flood point. In other words, the flood that would occur every, instead of every two years, it would occur every three years, so. And the floodway is considered a different regulatory regulated area than the flood fringe. The floodway is the area where basically most of the water is flowing during the flood. It's moving, okay? And it's also an area that has different, a little bit different standards than the flood fringe. And this is the area where inundation is occurring, but it's not necessarily moving water. If you ever, a good place to go see this is if you're ever in Sheffield, Vermont, there's a canoe launch. And every spring, that whole cornfield that's right out floods. And you can, there's nothing happening at the canoe launch, but in the middle, it's moving like crazy. And you can say, okay, I wouldn't want to be out there in a canoe. So just think of that as where, you know, where the water's really moving closely. Now, in Pownell, you only have like less than 5% of the area in this whole area. It's not a huge, huge amount of land, okay? These different zones, AE and A and all, those all refer to different zones that FEMA considers with respect to flood insurance, okay? AE means that they know where the elevation is, and A, they're not. Now, that's kind of a weird thing in Pownell, because this was all done with elaborate elevation measurement called LHR. So they actually know where all the elevation is. I don't know why they have an AE and an A, so I can't answer that for you. Okay?
Michael, would the Irene was a 500-year flood?
I have no idea. I don't know. You know, the kind of flood varies from stream to stream. Okay, so I don't know if that was a 500-year storm or not.
I mean, that's really, you know, it's kind of, in my mind, unfortunate that we still wind up using that 100-year, 500-year thing. You know, it's really based on their modeling, historical modeling. You know, the 100-year flood is, Michael has up there, you know, the flood that has a chance of occurring every year with a 1% level of probability. It doesn't, it does not mean it's going to happen every 100 years. It could just as easily happen one year and then happen the next year. It's just that each year it's a 1% probability, whereas a 5-year, 500-year is a 0.2% chance, so a lower probability, but same type of thing. And, you know, that's, that's a bigger flood, but a lower, you know, lower chance of happening. I mean, one of the problems is that, you know, the climate conditions are changing quickly enough, that those probabilities are maybe a little bit out of date. So maybe the 100-year flood is a 20-year flood, and the 500-year flood is an 80-year flood. I mean, you know, we don't really know.
So for the average citizen listening to that hearing 500-year flood, they think, oh, it's the first time it's happened in 500 years, which is, it's not, it's not about that. It's probability.
Yeah, and the most dangerous thing is people think that if you have a quote-unquote 500-year flood, that, oh, good, well, not... But that's really not the case at all, so.
Until it happens.
So... There's actually a rather small area within that.
I'm going to cut you off. One question I had, you have, you have Brook. That's, I don't know, that's considered a floodplain or part of there.
Yeah.
Have they ever even got high on Irene?
Maybe not, but it gets high sometimes. It may not happen to a very large floodplain, but it has some. I mean, the Husick is the big one.
Yeah.
So the other concept that, and this is really where this picture is relevant, is what's called river corridors. Because what mostly happens in Vermont is that erosion occurs along the stream banks. And if your house happens to be sitting in the area that erodes and falls into the stream, well, you've got a problem. And rivers meander. And this meander may be here now, and next time it may be like this, okay? It shifts. And so what, what the state has been trying to push is, and we would like you to consider, is adopt, adopting river corridors, because that protects people so that their house doesn't erode and fall into the river. And one thing that's important about this is that flood insurance, you have flood insurance. Now, in general, only like 10% of the people in the flood zone have flood insurance. But if you do have flood insurance and you have a flood, then you can get reimbursed. If your house falls into the river, it may or may not, the insurance company may say, well, that wasn't a flood. That was erosion. So... You kind of need a little bit of extra protection for some people, so that they don't have any, so that they have some.
What exacerbates that, makes it a little bit more problematic, is that a lot of the damage that occurs from erosive flooding in river corridors may affect properties that absolutely are not in the flood hazard area. That was the case in Irene, where there were a lot of homes that were built, you know, 50 or 60 feet above the river. So there was no particular danger that they were going to be inundated by flood. What happened was they were undercut by the flood, and they fell into the river. So the fact that, you know, you have flood insurance to protect you from flood inundation does not necessarily mean, you know, as Michael said, that you're protected either physically or financially from the dangers of river corridor flooding.
So we go back to this image. Think about the meandering I was saying. So this is where the meanders occur. And so this, this may not get inundated, but that could be eroded, and that house ends up in the river, and decide to move. And that's going to happen. It's really hard to stop that from occurring. It's very expensive. And also, often when you do do that, you just push the problem downstream. The next person then has all that erosion, and their house falls in the river. You're not going to put all the streams in Pownell in a pipe. And so there have to be other ways to try to protect people and adapt to these natural processes. So this is a lot, a lot of, a lot of language up here, but the current bylaw, I'm trying, I've sort of made a crosswalk between the current bylaws and the proposed changes. And so just going back to that area, the floodway, your current law basically says you can't let the river, the elevation of floodway rise. And the proposed laws would say you can't let it rise, and you can't let the velocity increase, because that has its own destructive. Okay, so it's a little bit more restrictive. Now you have the development has to be at that base flood elevation, in other words, at the 100-year, right there, right at that level. And the new regulations would say, it really should be two feet. It should have some extra, extra protection. And that could be just raising the build. It's not that you can't, you have to build two feet above, but that you build in such a way that it's got that extra.
Well, what good would that do if your, if your property's undercut, right?
Well, that, no, that wouldn't help with the erosion.
That wouldn't help with the cutting. But if you build it two feet higher and put ports in the foundation so the water can go through, that's a pretty good solution.
And then you can live in a teetering house for the next...
No, you have a port that's big enough to take the water.
Well, you're right. You're right. The best thing to do is not build there. But if you want to build there, that's where you're stuck. Then if you can floodproof your house, that's basically what you're saying. Because that's, and the more floodproofing, the better. For manufactured housing, right now, I believe your structure can be, if it's a new structure, can be 36 inches or three feet above grade, if only it's securely anchored. In this case, it would be, we'd go back to the two feet. Non-residential structures could be at that 100-year elevation, and otherwise, these would be at the same thing, two feet. So in other words, we're raising everything up.
But what is the rationale of lowering the manufactured housing? Because it was...
From 36 inches to 20 feet.
Is it just for continuity, consistency?
For manufactured housing, if the above not possible, structures should be...
Let me look into this, because it's possible that I got this wrong. I was looking at this today. So why don't we, why don't we get back to you on that, okay? Rather than we get into that now. Because I, as I remember, a lot, in main cases, your manufactured housing is allowed, allowed to be at grade, regardless of what the flood elevation is. So I'm looking at that going, I don't think that's quite right.
Okay.
So, but of course, that's 36 inches above grade as opposed to above flood elevation, okay?
Right.
So if it's, if the flood elevation is here and the grade is there, the building has to be here as opposed to two feet above.
Right, yeah.
Okay? Is that more clear?
I mean, that makes sense. I was just wondering why the, why the difference in what will change, but it might not be...
It was to raise it above that base flood elevation as opposed to 36 inches above grade. Three feet above, I mean, the surface.
Oh, okay.
I mean, in some cases, in some cases, you have...
36 is not the same as the two feet.
It's 36. Here's the ground. Here's the ground. And the base flood elevation is at my head, okay? Right now, you can get to here. You have to build it here. You're still below the floodline. Now you have to build that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, you do have, you do have mobile homes that would be under six feet of water, if they were great.
It doesn't actually say that in the language, though, the second opposed change, that it should be...
Oh, same as on the development.
Okay, I got you. Sorry.
I know. That's why this is... Yeah. Believe, there's a few more changes than this, but I wanted to go over the major things. The other thing that's probably really important is, if you're building in that flood fringe, then you need to provide for compensatory storage, okay? So in other words, if you kept building and building and building, and meeting all these requirements, you're still going to limit where the water's got to go somewhere. And if you keep pushing it, you're still pushing it downstream. So you need to provide some other place where it can go. That may be, that may be creating some floodplain someplace, right? So...
And it has to be at the same elevation and so forth.
Yeah, it would be, yes. In other words, it's basically saying, if you want to build here, you can, but you're going to have to...
And create new flood, water storage capacity at the same elevation as your building.
In other words, put the wetlands back.
You could do that, yes.
Not that we dried them all up in all these years.
Yeah, you could do that.
What a great idea.
Very expensive.
Now, in terms of river corridors, right now, you have no requirements on river corridors. This would basically inhibit development within river corridors, except there's allow, there's areas where, in other words, where you have relatively denser development, you can have into, okay? So if you're out there in the middle of nowhere, you shouldn't build in the river quarter. But if you're in a village, and there's already development, then you can fill in as long as you're staying back a certain distance.
So that's how you differentiate that in wording of the bylaw?
Yes, yes. There's a, there's a complicated graphic. And you already have a, if I recall, you have a 50-foot edge of bank from streams. Because there's two kinds of river corridors. The, we'll call them the big ones and the little ones. And the little ones are basically 50 foot, feet from the edge of a stream. And so you kind of already have that. So you're not really changing that dramatically. You've already got a provision where you're basically saying you can only build within 50 feet if you get approval from the development review board. And in this case, you basically wouldn't, except for these inflow issues. But maybe we could, we could look at some, well, to just give you an idea of, so these are the different types of areas from river quarter down to the 500-year floodplain. And just to give you an idea, in terms of mobile homes, you have 131 mobile homes that are in some kind of floodplain. They're either in a river quarter, or they're in one of those flood zones. 131. And you have 86 single-family homes. Those are your two big ones. You have well over 1,000 single-family homes. So it's not a huge number, but it's a fair, it's a fairly substantial number of your mobile homes.
When you count people, it's a pretty big number.
Yeah, but it's not like, it's not like 50% of your single-family homes. But I just wanted to give you an idea of what's affected now. And many of these are already affected, because they're already in the flood zones you already have. Okay, so let's look at some maps. So with, see what this looks like in Pownell. So here's Pownell. And here's 346 and Route 7. And these little lines out here are your streams. If I add your zoning areas, so here are your village, your village zones, your commercial overlay, and your different residential zones, and your far center. Okay. Now, Jim was saying there's some changes to the zoning map, because if you remember, in your town plan, you turned this into RR2, and we turned those strips into village, if I recall.
Correct. That's the vision for it.
Yeah, and this became commercial industrial. But we'll get to that.
Right.
That gives you an idea of, you know, basically, you're focusing development in your village areas. So if we look at where the flood zones are, you can see a lot of your flood zones are in, obviously, along the Husick. Okay? And north Pownell, and Pownell, or, you know, especially around the racetrack, are 2D areas that are fairly significant. We look at river corridors. I'm going to just show them, so I don't show the flood zone. These are the kind of blue areas. And this 50-foot line is around the smaller streams. And then the bigger area, can you see that? Can you see that? Along the Husick. So that's where the Husick wants to meander. So there's a fair amount of overlap between the river corridors and the flood zones. If you could see both of them together.
Who did that study?
Okay, that was done, there was a study, there were what are called Phase 1, Phase 2, and river quarter studies of the Husick done back...
Four or five years ago, if that sounds right.
Yeah. And then we more recently did one for Ladbrook and Tubbs Brook.
This spring.
Can you, do you have your pointer? Can you point out Ladbrook and Tubbs Brook?
Here's Tubbs, all right?
Yeah.
And Lad is...
Ladbrook, yeah, it's on the, along the road.
Yeah, and those were done because they're, they're impaired for sediment. So we were able to get some funding for that. And also, because this is where one of the major mobile home parks are, Ladbrook makes a radical turn and goes under the railroad bridge, and the railroad bridge is a potential blockage. It has been a blockage, not only because it's too small, but sometimes junk piles up and has backed up and caused the flooding in the mobile home park. Oops, that's my cat.
Saw your butterfly just before that.
Oh, yeah, my butterfly. So that gives you an idea of how these zones affect some of your developed areas. I mean, Pownell Center is really pretty much scot-free, but other areas are more affected. And we can zoom in on some of these things. I think I was going to show you something else. Want to zoom in? You want to zoom in the racetrack? Should we do that?
That would be fun.
So let me take a few things away, and this will be all a bit worrying.
I'll tell you what, Michael's learning. One of the, one of the...
Switch to an aerial photograph. Here are the solar panels.
Yeah. The ponds.
Yeah.
So one of the, one of the concerns that I had are things that I was wondering about in the context of the racetrack. I know that you had talked about a commercial industrial zoning designation there that would ultimately allow the uses that are allowed in either the commercial or the industrial zone on the racetrack property, which is currently zoned village and everything like that. It, because it kind of runs into the Pownell Village designation. But, you know, in looking at this, if I'm looking at like a larger commercial or industrial development, it's, you know, certainly going to be subject to state review as well as your local review. What's really going to be available realistically for a substantial commercial and industrial development? You know, the river corridor stuff is, you know, whether or not you, you decide to adopt river corridor regulations locally for larger scale development, you know, the State Agency of Natural Resources is going to weigh in on that.
Regardless of what we've adopted.
Right. And then the ponds there and the racetrack are essentially weapon properties, which are, you know, regulatory. So you're left with a kind of just little strips of land that's actually developable at the racetrack property, which was interesting for me to see, because I've never really taken a comprehensive look at the property. I, it would always, people talked about the constraints to development, which, you know, are those and issues with access for the railroad track. But anyway, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, like, you know, is, is our vision for the future development and economic development of the town kind of leaning on the racetrack property for some substantial development potential? Is that out of sync with reality?
Right.
Well, so, yeah, I mean, we can, we can discuss that, because I'm interested to hear what you folks have to say.
But if we put restrictions on it, it more than likely won't happen, or definitely won't happen.
Well, you know, if you put your, if you put it out there in your plan and your, in your land use regulations, you're basically saying, you know, this is the kind of development we want to have happen there, and this is the kind of development that is going to be beneficial to the town. So in a way, you're kind of saying, you know, we're, we're counting on some level of substantial, you know, commercial and/or industrial development on this property to help with the economic development of the community. And, you know, if you do that, and that's what you're thinking, and it's not real, you know, maybe you should be spending more of your time thinking about encouraging and promoting economic development in other parts of the town. It's, it's fodder for discussion, anyway. I mean, that...
Agreed.
It's like, so like, you can...
Well, so what stands in our way, so, would be, A, that the property is owned by somebody, what, the railroad company, or who the heck, or whatever.
Well, the railroad, the railroad, the railroad has only been an issue because it limits access to that.
Okay, so the property's owned by somebody, then they're not about to sell it. The railroad limits access. And then there's limited, very, very, can you kind of use the pointer to show us?
Yeah, do you quantify how much would be in the floodplain and...
Well, this, well, this blue is floodzone. This hatched area is the river quarter.
So the state will regulate both of those, any development in both of those?
Well, they will...
Well, it depends, it depends kind of on, on the, you know, on the size.
Do you guys have lawyers?
Well, yeah.
Oh, sorry, sir.
It depends, it depends a little bit on the size and the magnitude of the development. You know, if you get into a larger commercial development, it's, you know, going to be, or industrial, it's going to trigger Act 250 or like the old, you know, the 248 Beaverwood Biomass Energy Project that is down there. Then, you know, the Agency of Natural Resources is going to be involved in the permitting process, and they take a pretty hard line on the river corridor issues and a very, very hard line on the wetland issues. So, but if it's a smaller, if it's a smaller project that falls outside those state thresholds, then, you know, they might not look at, because wetlands, doesn't matter, they go with the wetlands. But the river corridor, perhaps not as much if you didn't have local regulations. So conceivably, something could happen, but you're still, you still have to grapple with, first of all, you have to grapple with the fact that it's all flood hazard area regardless of whether or not you adopt river corridor regulations, and you're going to have flood hazard area regulations because you need it for the flood insurance program. And the other, the other part is you still have to think, is it a good idea to allow development to happen there where it could be destroyed in a flood and then, you know, set yourself, set yourselves up for all sorts of, you know, financial both for the town and for the, you know, the property or for the people who actually developed there. So, I mean, there's a lot of things to think about. It's not absolutely black and white, I don't, I don't mean to say that it is.
Kind of cherry pick this, being familiar with the racetrack, this is the south end and the north end. And the south end is prone, that's where the water comes in. Okay, it's a low point. And then your strong water flow is there. The north end seems to be a different cat with the river stops you from coming in.
Right.
We actually have a right-of-way on the south end, the town has a road there that can go to the cemetery at any time at once. So the town owns the south end. The railroad's prohibiting you using from the north end. And the north end up to the Tam, didn't seem to hold a lot of water there. It definitely wasn't flowing fast.
So you're talking about
Yes, yes, that area there. Plus, there's two good parcels of land across the railroad tracks.
East of the railroad.
East of the railroad tracks. Very nice, one could be a very nice truck stop, small mini mall, which is on the north side of, it's on the other side of railroad tracks.
I think it's
Where the ball field is and the
You're looking at like
Yes, it's two very nice parcels right there, which should be, you know, water and septic is available there. Because we don't own the property, but those two could be marketed very well. And I, Tam has never flooded. That part and that, and I own some property out there, so that's never come close to flooding.
Tam's, Tam's not, if I'm reading it right, Michael, Tam's not in the flood hazard area or the river corridor.
It's right there.
Oh, and a little bit in the river corridor.
The old sawmill, let's go back to that.
Is there the possibility of access to this north end from down there versus, so take the railroad tracks out of the equation?
There could be, there is, there is. That's the area that we talk about, that possibly the Ladbrook goes into. And when that blocks up, as Mike was saying earlier, it goes into the trailer park.
Right, right.
So there's an issue there.
Yes, we actually went out there and looked at some of the culverts under the, that road that you're talking about, and if they could be increased in size, that would
That would help a lot.
And we actually talked to Trevor about whether he'd want to do that if he ever turned that into a road. Of course, we don't know what's happening with Tam because now they're acquired by Gasella, we're dealing with a whole different company.
The Mars is in town now, Gasella, the big boys are here.
Yeah, so that's a whole new ballgame. But the thing is, I think regardless of regulation or whatever, I mean, I would encourage you to think about regulation, but these are problems. Whoever wants to get that property is going to have, even without any regulation, they're going to get, they're going to get hit with something. They're going to have to play flood insurance.
They know it, they know it.
So it's not going to be easy for any, it's just not a, there are better places to go.
Yeah.
That's what we have to focus on, the better places to go.
Sure.
Right.
So we have any thoughts on it?
Well, you're on this commission, you should be doing that.
You could put solar panels in the rest of it.
You can, sure, we don't worry about that, right? Yeah, well, because if they run it up
Could shore it out. You could, they could, we gotta start certain they, whoever, Mike Solo, I mean, Solos, Mr. Solos.
The, I guess one of the questions I have to think about necessarily to answer tonight is, you know, that the town plan designation of commercial industrial for the whole parcel, is that something we want to stick with? Is that something you want to limit to, you know, the more, as Jim said, the more likely development areas in the northern part? Or do you want to, you know, think about, you know, given that we've merged village and commercial now to maintain a, you know, a village designation over all the part of the racetrack property? I mean, I don't know, I don't really have a recommendation for you. I just say that those are, those are kind of the questions we
We brought it up, so. But you are also going to, you know, you're going to look at definitions of light manufacturing or something like that to see if, if this can be blended in a village anyway, why not just get rid of the commercial zone altogether? Maybe that's not fair to everybody else in the village zone, and we'd have to take a good hard look at that.
Well, I mean, the village, the village zone, you know, does allow that. We have yet to explicitly define what it is. I think we know conceptually what we're talking about when we're talking about light manufacturing as opposed to heavy manufacturing. But we do, we do have to specifically define it. So, yeah, so there's a possibility with village area now does allow almost, you know, very open-ended for commercial development.
Well, that's why I'm going to read the two.
And to light manufacturing, so
Yeah, I got sort of it, so.
So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not
Right.
I'm not convinced that it would be, it would be a big
It's all that, right.
That there's a lot of reason to have a, you know, a separate commercial industrial zone there. We could certainly, it's not a big deal to create, you know, section five point, whatever, commercial industrial, it would be that area. I just don't know if, between the constraints on the property and the fact that you can already do a lot now in village zoning designation, I don't know if it would be worth that left.
The question is, how did biomass people, they were going to move in there. They were on their way.
You know, we've certainly participated in that, in that process, and they never really got past the pre-hearing conferences. You know, so they never got into the substance of the Section 248 review, so I don't, I don't know.
The construction ended, but they were just going through the permit process.
Well, yeah, they basically, they didn't even really get to the, you know, the criteria that would weigh in on those environmental constraints. They were basically, you know, at the last hearing I think they had was, was at the public, then the Public Service Board, and there was still a lot of, you know, posturing for, you know, who should be granted intervenor status and what the, what the potential impacts might be on the, on the water supply for the
The water supply was an issue, but they threw a Chico dough at it.
Yeah, yeah, but like I said, I said that the issues never really, they never really got to the point where they were discussed.
To draw water out of it.
Because they never really got to the application phase before they pulled their application. So, I don't know, I thought about that today though, to tell you the truth.
Well, deja vu, you know, it's a new convenience.
Because they were going in there with a, with a real, you know, substantial industrial operation that would have involved, you know, both, you know, a pretty significant manufacturing facility as well as a lot of storage. So I was thinking, you know, they're going to be, their proposal was to, you know, bring in whole logs and debark them on site and then, and then
The pellets.
Grind the logs and the pellets and use the waste heat for, what were they using the waste heat for? They had a pretty
They had a plan, they was good, but they only wanted the north part. That was going to be subdivided.
Right, yeah, it was, but, you know, I was like, well, you know, if it was all in the, you know, even if it wasn't in the river corridor, and I don't know if any of it was, it was in the flood hazard area. And were, you know, was that, was that all going to flood, I don't know.
Well, aside from, sorry, Megan, aside from Act 248, were they dealing with the flood issues? Or was it just 248?
Well, that would have come up, I mean, there was a debate at the time too as to whether or not they should be subject to both Act 250 and Section 248 because the only part of the use involved electricity generation. You know, the other, the other part was the pellet manufacturing, which is what they were going to use the waste heat for.
And they were banking on 248 and trying to avoid 250.
They wanted to limit the review to 248. But 248 has criteria very similar to 250. It's just a different kind of process, but the criteria are very much the same. But nobody knows what would have happened.
Right, it was on its way.
They did receive permits up in Fairhaven in New York State and then never built.
Well, they wouldn't allow them to pipe the water from, the water was a big issue.
To bring in cooling.
The Housick was a natural, because it was right there. But you had six miles to pipe water from to Fairhaven.
Yeah, that, well, I don't know, we don't need to, we can re-debate that part, but brings back memories.
Well, it could come back again, that's what I'm saying, you know.
Well, your town plan, your anti-plan, basically you decided you did not want major biomass. So presumably the Public Service Board would give that deference and say, you know, we're not going to allow biomass like that. So I don't think it'll come back.
Well, you see, there's two sides on the other side of the railroad tracks.
Well, they take, you know, I mean, like you said, we don't need to talk about energy policy there, but I think that since that project came along too, the state's taken a real hard look at, you know, the relative efficiency of using biomass for generating electricity versus using biomass for other things that are a lot more efficient than generating electricity.
Like heating.
Like heating, yeah.
But you did support
So, so, you know, I think the only way that it would apply to state is if you could really show that that waste heat, which is huge from electricity generation, could be captured. So if you had a place where you could have like an industrial park, you know, and you could, you could suck off the waste heat from the electricity generation and use it to heat the industrial park, then they might look at it a little bit more kindly. But just to generate electricity that the efficiencies are so low that it's pretty dicey.
That's not what we heard at the time, though.
Anyway, so those are the things to think about, I mean, we would, I would sort of encourage you to incorporate the river corridor. I don't think it's, I don't think the impacts to property development is that much, much greater, but it does provide that extra protection for those people who don't have it now. This happens to be a major problem property regardless of what you do for anyone who wants to develop it. Somehow more creative thinking in terms of what to do with the racetrack is needed, seems to me.
Fire bone.
Well, there are a lot of possibilities, but maybe not so many developments.
Well, it's, you know, it's a, on the, on the face of it, the racetrack property is really attractive property because if you, if you kind of block out some of the visual blake that exists there now, it's really a beautiful piece of land.
Yeah, it was a very farmy.
It's just a question
It's all hot tubbed, it's not going to be farmy anymore. But it had three very, very
Oh, no, you can't.
It has three very successful years with the car show. Made a lot of money for the Shriners. Shriners made a lot of money there with Bingo. It has potentials for things Why'd it stop? Why'd it stop? Out of politics.
Really?
Well, the motels, you know, they felt Bennington didn't want to lose.
Didn't want to lose the car show.
It got pulled back to Bennington, so to speak. And then you lost Mike Williams.
Right, that's right, too.
Certain people can do things and certain people can't. Mike Williams just knew how to do things.
Boy, he did, forgot all about him.
But he had four hundred volunteers.
Well, the question of using, using that property is, you know, is an event venue is still
Williams College study, that's what they, they came over, the kids from Williams College, they studied, it was events.
You'd have to have an event every two weeks to make it pay. And it'd have to be, it'd be very expensive, I think, and a lot of infrastructure.
Well, yeah, and the question of like, is it a field where you have, you know, parking in a temporary stage or something? Or is it a place where you've got large buildings like, you know, the rehabilitated grandstand or something, which is a whole different animal? So, anyway, I mean, we can have that discussion later, but so, Michael, I think you're going to, you're going to basically provide us with a draft that'll have flood hazard area and river corridor.
Are we going in the right direction? Yeah.
I agree.
And then, and then when, I'm working with the planning commission to cobble all these section by section together. So when, when that's integrated and we get the whole thing put together, then we're going to start back at the beginning and go back through and we can have an in-depth discussion of what you want and what you don't want.
Absolutely. Makes perfect sense.
Okay, good.
Is that it? Is that the whole slideshow?
I must, you know, seem like I've tripped the floor.
He wanted to see
You want to see the giant algae or the giant bison?
Bison, pison.
Jim, are there any towns in Vermont which have a zone for conservation?
Conservation zone?
Yeah, meaning you keep it in its natural state.
Oh, there's a lot, I mean, that have, I don't know, it's like exclusively, absolutely do nothing, but there's, certainly most of the towns in our region have something, you know, akin to or more restrictive than your forest zone where you can't, essentially no permanent development is allowed. It allows, you know, economic, natural resource-based activities, but not
Like logging?
Yeah, logging, recreation, agriculture potentially. You know, most of them allow, you know, seasonal camps as well. But, yeah, probably, probably at least twenty-five or thirty percent of Bennington counties is zoned that way by towns because of the rugged mountains.
Rugged, right.
Yeah, yeah. It's a little bit less common, well, it's a lot less common to have that type of restrictive zoning in the, you know, in the valley areas. You know, there's a couple of spots in the region that have like a very low density agricultural zones, like twenty-five acre minimum lot size and mandatory cluster, cluster, what we now are calling planned unit development, so that most of that is preserved as open space. But by and large, most of the, you know, most of the large swaths of land that we're looking to conserve in the valleys are protected through non-regulatory means like land trusts and conservation easements. Any other questions for?
No, just RR2 is everything that's not colored up there, right?
Yes.
I thought we'd already done away with the zone. It's obviously one I'm living in.
No, no. I know you like showing off.
What color do you want? How about, how about this one biohazard overlay, we'll use that for the
Thank you, Michael.
Much appreciated.
Demonstration of your adept
Do we, do we have John Brooker Campbell down here when he's feeling better?
If you want.
He was going to bring us up to date on the state's approach. He's, as you said, he's kind of our guy, right?
Well, we're trying to have, we kind of did that tonight, and maybe what we could do is when we draft some bylaws for you, then maybe that would be a good time for you to come down and explain. Because there's a lot of mechanics to all those bylaws. Have you hired a zoning administrator yet?
Yeah.
So how that
Where is he?
Michael Gardner.
Okay, so that person is going to be doing some different things than they did before. And all permits should be referred to him.
Should be referred to him, he hasn't gotten any from Paul.
Not, last time I talked to him, yeah. You don't probably have a lot of things going on.
No, I don't think so.
If they're happy to, they haven't gone up to himself, yeah. If they're happy to need, they haven't gone up to himself, yeah.
And I certainly haven't heard of any since Michael Gardner's taken over, so, okay. All right, I think, you know, at some point we probably should have.
Oh, definitely, yeah, for sure, yeah.
A final, a final draft, good. Well, thank you, Michael, I know you've been dying to come back to Paul for a long time.
Paul.
So.
That's great, is there anything else you want me to, you want me to stay or do you want me to?
Oh, you can, you can.
We need somebody to take notes.
Unless you'd like to talk about parking regulations.
Well, those are my, one of my favorites.
Parking in the, in the flood zone. So I do have one quick question for you, is those, is it river meanders? You can't leave that. Is it meanders? And we set up zoning and flood regulations regarding that. What happens is it changes, that whole Floville study that we had done five years ago. Do you just keep updating that every five years?
Well, the boundaries that I showed you should be the boundaries within which it will.
For a long time, 100 years or something like that.
Well, yeah, as best as you can tell, I mean, you know, a lot of this is, basically the way flood zones are mapped, first you have to figure out what the elevation is.
Right.
But then you have to figure out how much water's coming down the hill. And that's based on how much rainfall hits, which is based on.
Year by year.
The proportion of storms that meet a certain, reach a certain amount, certain amount of amount. Given all kinds of things with respect to where the rain is hitting, what the cover type is and the like. And one of the problems that makes it really all fuzzy is since 1960, we've had one inch of additional precipitation per year every decade. So there's six inches more precipitation hitting Vermont now than there was in 1960. That's a fairly amount, and you probably can see it, you probably realize that there's more rain coming down, right?
The Manicant is the classic. You have to go to the Manicant, you see this little brook.
You're talking about erosion.
It's taking away the green out there.
I love that place.
I know, but.
My wife won't go there because she thinks it's gonna.
Sit near the door.
It's not the way she wants to die.
But we can discuss the controversy of climate change, but everybody knows it rains more, right? And all figure that one out.
Well, another reason I asked that was.
So, so where I'm going at is, is the best available information. But it's a very, it's a very complicated set of criteria that go into that. And one of, one of the problems is, is when FEMA did their last set of maps, they used the amount of precipitation it was raining, it was coming down in the 70s. They didn't update it. So they said, okay, when they, when they developed their LiDAR mapping, they, they said the flood zone is up to the 280 foot level. And that's where it was in 1970. Now we know where the 280 foot level is really accurately, but we don't know if that's the level where the rain's gonna, where the water's gonna rise because we didn't redo all the calculations.
We're, we're out of the Paris Climate Accord, we don't have to worry about that.
That's right.
I'm not talking about global warming, I'm talking about more rain, more rain, more, more water hitting the ground.
I disagree with your characterization as, of climate change is controversial. It's all, that's all.
I don't think he said that.
He said in some people's minds it's controversial, not yours.
Mike, you got your boots on, you're all right.
I'm ready for climate change.
I got you.
Better than Martin Stalls when he gets on, too. Well, thank you, much appreciated, I'm sure we'll probably do it again.
Let's start with me again. Put this thing together, right? All right, so Jim, you wanna talk about the, the review notes for Section 8?
I would love to do that.
All right, good, 'cause I have some questions for you.
Good, good, I probably don't have any answers, but I will take notes. I did, I did wanna say though, you know, the one, the one thing I sort of skipped over was, you know, the infamous table. The infamous table has a, has a section that is process, that this is a process. And part of the process table is essentially the subdivision regulations. So what I would propose to do, I haven't done yet, is to extract that subdivision review out of the table, because it's kinda hidden in there. And make that physically Section 7, and call Section 7 subdivision regulations, and just lay it out. So that's an easy thing to do, I just haven't extracted it.
Okay.
So previously, we had talked about Section 6. And Section 6 had a bunch of stuff that we were proposing to get removed, well, to mostly remove from the bylaws, that being the wetlands and conservation overlays. And we have instead, and in the draft I sent around, included special regulations, Sections 8.13 and 8.14, that incorporated relevant parts of those. You know, we're kind of recognizing that a lot of that, those things are covered by either state law in terms of those wetlands regulations, or in the, the weak natural areas, biolaboratory, things like that. We've, we've kind of referenced those in the, in the performance standards and the conditional use stuff. So we really didn't need to have a separate section.
I agree.
Anyway, we'll, we'll go over all that again when we go over the whole thing. But, so that, that got us up to Section 8, which is, other than some kind of housekeeping sections at the end of the bylaw, the last substantive section of the bylaw. So that, the remaining sections I've included notes on. So Section 8.1 deals with earth products removal. And it didn't, it didn't change a lot in Section 8.1, but I did note that, whereas now there's a, it's not exactly clear the authority that they're being reviewed under, these sand, sand and gravel or whatever operations. I said, it infers within the regulations that they should be treated as conditional uses. But I just made that clear. It said, removal of earth products, because it should be treated as a conditional use. So that's, that's clear. And then there's, so in addition to the regular conditional use standards in that, in that section of the bylaw, 4.2.2, there are specific standards under this section that I just carried over. And I didn't change anything really, except for at the bottom of that first page, paragraph E.
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause that one is, that one deals with extraction from a stream bed?
I don't think that would be permitted.
Well, it's not really. So, 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 well, I basically.
Let's vote on it right now.
Yeah, it's in your bylaw now, and there's a bunch of standards and provisions for how you, how you can legally go about extracting gravel from a stream bed, because there's a lot of gravel in stream beds. But the, the problem is that the State Department of Environmental Conservation requires you to get a stream alteration permit to go into a stream, especially, you know, extraction of gravel. So there's, in fact, there's a whole section in the, in the stream alteration permit guidelines that the Department of Environmental Conservation has that deals with just that point. So again, it's kind of like the wetlands in that there's really no point in the town trying to say how you can do this. So it basically just says, hey, if you wanna extract gravel from a stream bed, you know, we can't give you a permit unless you demonstrate to us that you own this by the state, the C stream alteration people.
And the state will not give them a permit.
Well, there's some special circumstances and conditions where they could, yeah. I mean, I mean, like, you know, like after, we're talking about like after Irene.
Oh, sure.
You know, where there was a lot of deposition in stream beds that created hazardous conditions. And in those cases, they were issuing permits to go in and remove the gravel from the stream bed in certain situations. So it's not an absolute, but it's nothing that the town can just say, go ahead and do it if you, if you, and then someone took your word for it. They'd probably be mad at you when they got fined by the state. So.
Should we at least reflect that, that it's covered by the state?
It is, I think.
I think the governor cleared emergency, Irene.
Yeah.
Particularly across the interstates.
I think our removal of earth products by law should require that only a percentage, whether it's 10% or 15% of the entire area where extraction is proposed can be worked on at any one time. In other words, you can't take the topsoil off of 15 acre piece of ground and then dig up one acre.
Start moving around.
And let, yeah, and let it erode. And I think there should be a limitation on how much of the face of the bed can be opened at one time. I think there should be a limitation on.
Does Act 250 govern that?
I have no idea.
Yes. Well, there's actually some exemptions in, in 250 for some of these operations, but I'm not sure if that will.
Okay. But I agree with Sid on that, because we've seen it.
And I think there should be a real strict restoration requirement where you have to regrade the entire extracted area to get a, an average grade, which is not precipitous. I don't think you have to bring Phil in necessarily, but I think.
Move around what's there.
I think move around what's there so that you don't have a mini Rocky Mountain situation.
Are you guys talking about a specific spots and.
No, I'm talking about gravel extraction, removal of earth.
No, because you said, you just said, we've seen that happen.
Seen it in surrounding communities.
Elsewhere, okay. Yeah, yeah.
And I haven't paid much attention here, it could've happened here, too.
Strip the topsoil.
Strip the topsoil and work on one corner, and then move to another corner and leave the other, the original site open and not restore it. And I, I agree with Sid completely about the restoration part of this, absolutely.
And oftentimes, I think, I think the DRB, I think there should be a suggestion that the DRB not only may consider the location and use of structures, equipment, roofs, and transport material and hours of operation, but may require adequate bonding to assure restoration.
That's a good idea. Where would that be?
No, I'm sorry, you know, there is, and I didn't, I didn't copy all the language, so 8.1.5.
Yeah, sure.
So stuff where I wasn't making any changes, I don't think I covered the language.
Surety bond.
But that is in there. So, yeah, I, I just got, I didn't want this to get too long.
Yeah, I mean, they cite a DSA 44078. The DRB may require the applicant for an earth products removal operation to post a surety bond with the town treasure and amount and form approved by the DRB as sufficient to guarantee conformity with the provisions of the permit issued hereunder. So that language works.
And, and restoration. That's just a surety bond to make sure they don't wreck the place, but they restore it.
Right.
So add the words "and restoration."
Well, we're not drafting stuff now, we're just throwing ideas out.
Right.
Does paragraph C not address that, or address that adequately?
No, because you, confusion. Probably the topsoil C is, yeah.
The, I think Sid was talking too about, you know, taking sure that there's a maximum average grade across the whole parcel, so, you know, I suppose you could get it into a spot where.
A grade of one foot to two feet is pretty steep.
Yeah, if you have, if you have like a 50% grade, even if you seed it, it's probably gonna wash out.
Right, exactly.
So you probably.
Barbara, C there calls for the restoration of it, but if somebody doesn't have any money left and they just close the operation down and walk away, then it's only C is, only as good as the paper it's written on.
No teeth.
Okay.
So, good, so I have, I have some good notes on 8.1. So 8.2 was, was one of the sections that I, I went to town on a fair bet, actually. It has to do with, the current bylaw has a fairly short section on off-street parking areas, which is Section 8.2.2 here. So the, the general description of parking facilities in 8.2.1, check mark, I didn't change that. I had, I had suggested only one change really in C, 8.2.2C, trying to not overbuild parking.
Which, our current forces us to overbuild parking, right?
Yeah, I mean, you know, you could, you could make an argument, I guess, but, but these are, you know, these are minimum areas, and somebody could always make the argument that for their particular use, they need more parking than that. But it's kind of a shame to require a minimum that is more than, yeah, it drives me nuts to go by, you know, shopping centers that, you know, 99% of the time that they're just empty parking spaces.
Then why are we talking about overbuilding parking? What about parking areas that have some kind of drainage aspect to them? We're talking about the flood zone and so forth. I mean, that's one of the problems with flooding, is that there's.
Wastewater.
The parking lots are not, they're not permeable at all. Are we gonna add any language like that to our, uh, I mean, I don't know, does it make things a lot more expensive to?
It sure is, but it's.
Really, it does?
You couldn't have built a racetrack today with that big parking lot and going into the Husick, all that oil and water and all this dark cars parked there? No way.
Yeah, there's, so anytime, if you, if you build, I forget the size, but if you, if you build a large area of impermeable surface, you know, then, then you have to get a stormwater discharge permit from the state. And they have a lot of requirements about, you know, retaining the stormwater on site and, you know, kind of requiring infiltration areas and things like that, so it's not discharged directly into watercourses, but.
How large?
Run and Arrow had a big story on this.
How large is large?
Uh, that's a good question, I would have to look that up.
Yeah, because I think a 50-car parking lot ought to have remediate, ought to have a lot of water control provisions, requiring that the water be kept on site, that it be infiltrated into the ground on site, that it have a separator mechanism to separate oils from storm drainage.
Our, our, our site plan criteria, you know, require stormwater management plans and added a fair bit of detail, but take another look at those and see if we can. Anything that would require a substantial parking lot would be subject to site plan review, and they would have to submit a stormwater management plan, so it's a good.
I'm just thinking we, we should also rethink asphalt, as, you know.
I don't, I don't, I don't think, you know, I don't think that there's a specific requirement in your bylaws that parking lots behave.
I don't see one.
I think, I think.
I'm asking if they're not gonna take it.
Yeah, you know, I, I, and, you know, don't hold me this, but I, I've posted a lot of information about, you know, like really compacted gravel parking lots are almost as impermeable as a paved parking lot. You know, there's, there's other treatments of parking lots. You know, I was at a, a place this past weekend, they had those permeable surface parking lots, at a couple places. And so those are interesting, because they let the water propel down into the soil some more naturally. So it's.
Interesting, but expensive.
Yeah, it's not cheap.
Well, either it's asphalt or McCann, it's not cheap.
Clark, Clark did it, in Williamstown.
Did he?
Sure. There was a crush on those across some parking garage.
Crushed down in gravel?
Yeah, yeah.
There's, there's a, there's a kind of like a, almost asphalt looking.
Looks like paving stone.
Yeah, they'll go down through, and then there's also, a place I was at this weekend has like a lattice work, concrete kind of a thing with grass growing. concrete kind of a thing with, so grass grows up between it. So it's a hard surface, but the water goes right down there. So there's options, but I'm not, I, I couldn't give you a construction cost estimate on one of those versus a traditional paved parking lot.
There's strumming out there.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an issue and, you know, believe me, you know, one thing civil engineers in Vermont are really tuned into these days, it's, you know, stormwater management plans and stormwater design because they, they all have to get permits for those.
So Jim, are you okay with the dimensions in A through H?
Well, they're not, they're not unusual. And, and also was a little bit, I clarified a little bit in the end of that first sentence. I said, you know, that the, the following minimum area set forth is what's required. And then I said, if they, I said exclusive of driveways, and I said exclusive of access drives. Because I think it was a little bit. What, what I, what I want to do is say, okay, the parking lot itself needs that much space. And, you know, some bylaws get really, really detailed on minimum dimensional requirements for individual parking spaces and backup lanes and things like that. I don't think you really have to get there. I think you, you designate that you've got this much area that has to be provided for parking. And then, you know, you have to show that it, it works on your site plan. But as, as long as you've got, you know, for like, for the change we made for retail stores, an area equal to two times the floor area used for business. So if you have a two thousand square foot retail store, you provide, you know, four thousand square feet of parking. And that's the parking spaces plus the backup maneuvering spaces and snow storage areas and all the rest of it. So it's, you know, it's, it's a fair bit of land, but you, you, you need a fair bit of land. You know, so I, I think you don't want to overdo it, but.
A lot of requirements of the parking area must be behind the building.
Well, we're getting there. We're getting there. A couple of places, we're getting there. So, um, so the whole, I added a whole new section. Section eight point two point three, parking area standards. Because there really wasn't anything to tell you how to develop the parking lot or where to put it or what to make it look like or any of that stuff. So eight point two point three talks about that. And it talks about A is basically just says that, you know, it has to be laid out and marked so that it actually works, you know, that you're not just foot taking your four thousand square feet and doing a, a long narrow strip. You know, in, in someplace where it would work. And then B, it's one that Sid was just talking about with the exception of access drives, parking facilities for public multifamily, commercial industrial uses should be located in the rear and side yards as if not in the front yard. And the DRB may approve limited parking in the front yard between the street line and the principal building on corner lots for handicap access and based on unique site characteristics. So it doesn't prohibit it per se, but it strongly encourages the parking to go behind to the side of buildings. And, you know, that, it may seem either like not a big deal or, or counter to what most commercial development has. And, you know, the, the thing is, I think that the location of the parking for the character of development and the character of this of the streetscape is one of the most important things that you can do. Because if you have a sea of asphalt, it really kind of sets a tone as opposed to having an attractive building close to you. And, and, and I think that, you know, the, you know, it, it just, it became common practice to put the parking between the road and the building in our very automobile oriented post-world war two society because that was how we got everywhere. So you just think, okay, the, the closest, easiest, most straightforward thing is to just boom. You know, drive off the road and park and then walk back to the store. But it's really no more difficult to drive it to the side of a building.
Right.
Rear of a building.
Well, provided you've got a door back there.
Well, provided you have a door back there, yeah.
Oftentimes it could be a service issue such as large trucks unloading or loading. And oftentimes they're around the back of the building versus the regular.
Well, that's, 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 yeah.
So there might be some of the unique site.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, you know, certainly I see, you know, very often, you know, parking on the side, probably, you know, as often and more often as in the front. I mean, and.
Right.
Then you, you still have, you know, parking near the road, but, you know, you, you also have a building near the road that, that kind of draws your attention probably more than the parking lot. And you could landscape the, the parking lot too. So it's, it's not like, you know, the parking is always, you know, thrown out back. I think it just gives you a little bit more flexibility. And again, it emphasizes more of the, you know, I think it kind of de-emphasizes the, the auto-oriented.
Where's?
I agree. It sends a good message to a developer that this is the way we prefer.
Yeah, but, you know, look, look, look at, look at that section, think about it because that's a, that's a, this whole section is, is new stuff.
You've already demonstrated that I haven't read this, so I'll ask another question. Maybe I'll be stupider still. Is there anything in this about design, about requiring new construction be of some attractive design? I know the DRB has taken endless hits over the dollar store, justifying it.
Well, yeah, that's, that's a good, that's a good example of, I, you just think about that in site development and you say, okay. Well, let's, let's write, let's write regulations.
The interest to the town.
Get rid of Pat Gray.
But.
That, that's number one.
Okay.
You can't say that on TV.
I know I can, but I just said.
Section, section eight point eight, I believe it is, is, is actually entitled building and site design.
Okay. Well, I knew you'd find the aesthetic aspect.
Yeah, so, so paragraph C under the parking deals with landscaping. So there's, there's some general language in the bylaw now about landscaping around paved areas and parking areas. This kind of makes it a little bit more detailed that for those non, you know, one or two family residential uses, they leave a landscape strip between any parking lot and adjacent properties. Yeah, except for where it's broken by access drives. And then these larger parking areas should have at least ten percent internal landscaping so that the, the parking lot itself is broken up. So it's not just a sea of asphalt. That also provides you an opportunity to do some of the stormwater retention work. You know, you can do those.
Rain gardens.
Rain gardens, exactly, in the parking lot to, to hold the stormwater. And then lighting, again, there's some language in the bylaw, different place on, on lighting. You know, this talks about minimizing the parking lot lighting and arrange to really focus on just lighting the, the parking area as opposed to, you know, spilling light out to adjacent property. And then, you know, the state always likes, the transportation agency always likes to emphasize access management. It's one of their favorite things from a safety and efficiency perspective. Just to, to try to limit the number of access points to a parking lot and the location of the access drives to try to minimize conflicting turning movements. So that's just some standard access management language there that, that tells you to try to consolidate your driveways. Keep them away from other intersections and.
But does it require you to consolidate driveways among three different uses or three different property ownerships, for example?
Yeah, so it, it, it does, it does, in the, the last bit of it there, in a, in a way, says a development review board may require provision for shared access between adjoining properties and may limit access to the property to the side sheet or secondary road. Question is, you know, it doesn't explicitly say that you need to connect adjacent parking lots other than saying that you're encouraging shared access. So you, you could be a little bit more specific.
Better than what we have.
Yeah, I mean, you could do a lot, you could do a lot more with parking. I mean, you could have five pages of parking regulations.
If I foresaw an explosion of commercial development, how long we might be talking about this far as a general score of dollar store.
It was, it was a real issue. Not, not to get too tangential, but it was a real issue in, in Manchester when there was a lot of urban development going on. And everybody was very possessive about their parking lots because their, what they could do on their site was dictated by how much onsite parking you had. So everybody had their own parking lots and everybody became very protective of their own parking lots. So every commercial building had a parking lot and an access drive parking lot, access drive parking. And, you know, it was crazy, you know, people would, would get in their car, go to the store, drive out of the road, drive into the next access, go to the next store because there were, you know, there were fences and landscaping and everything up between the stores. So they, they did get around to both breaking that down in their site plan review criteria and also requiring those internal connections, as you said, so that doesn't happen as much anymore. So it's a good point. Section, the next section should be, I'm sorry, should be eight point three, not eight point three point three. That was a typo.
And you also have a typo in eight point three point two, last word. I think it should be required state permits versus floor supply, waste water disposal have been obtained.
Yes.
That's pretty good for not having read it, Sid. Picked up on it.
I've been looking all through this for that one.
You got it. So eight point three is, is really just pulled in from the, the current regulations. Now, eight point three point one, it was an interesting thing. It says, this provision limits use of mobile homes at, at state campground. So it basically says there's nothing that can prevent you from using a mobile home, mobile, in a state campground. And I was, and I was just curious. I hadn't seen something like that that made a distinction between a state campground and another, a private campground.
Private campground.
So I wasn't.
Which is all we have here in town is a private campground.
Yeah, I wasn't sure about the reason for that or if there was a reason for that or.
I don't know. Going back in the archives, I can't remember. But here's my question, man. Help me understand that. We're talking about manufactured homes.
Yeah.
Right? We're not talking about a travel trailer or something that, you know, when we go camping, we haul it behind our cars and set up.
Well, that's not, you see, in.
Are we not differentiating?
Well, I don't, in the, in the existing, I'll read it the way it is now. It wasn't crystal clear to me, I guess. It said, nothing herein shall prevent the use of a mobile home or travel trailer at a campground operated by the state of Vermont on state land. So I, I wasn't, I, I was assuming that meant that you could use a mobile home as a, as like a, you know, like a.
Page sixty-nine, if you have your office campus at the bottom.
Yeah, so I wasn't, I, I was confused by that, but.
Yeah, welcome to our world. Well, let's just, can we, that, that's not my question. I have a question about eight point four. But let's stick with this for a minute. Anybody have any idea as to what we're talking about here or should we, you know, should we say camping trailers versus mobile homes? I mean, what, you know, was somebody going to bring in a forty-five foot long manufactured home and?
They've done it?
Yeah, I'm here for the weekend.
They have? They've done it?
Of course they have.
Fix them.
Well, and, and, and here's the other thing too. And I don't understand why a campground operated by the state of Vermont on state land. Unless there's some kind of regulation by the state that just allows this all over the place. The other one is people living in camping trailers on, on property. Is that something, it seems to go on quite a bit here in Pottel. I know of three places that people are doing that. Where they, they back in something that really is not a year round insulated to withstand winters and things like that. But it's their home and they're living in it. But we don't, we don't prohibit it as long as it meets all the setbacks and everything else.
Well, I mean, that's, and again, I, I didn't copy all the text from the bylaws, but section eight point three point two deals sort of with that about.
Does say a travel trailer may be used as a single family residence.
Well, this is a travel trailer.
For like six months?
I could, I could drive on any lot by a non-paying guest of the occupants or. Well, I don't know, but we have.
I don't think a travel trailer ought to be permitted to be used for a single family residence.
Well, this is, you know, mobile homes are defined.
Mobile homes.
They shall, yeah, I mean, you know, what, mobile home and travel trailer.
How do you differentiate?
You know, it says.
Very easy.
If, if you're gonna, if you're gonna live there, if it's gonna be a permanent residence, then it needs to be called according to your regs now, suitably anchored to a permanent concrete or make sure you thought they can skirt it and comply with state local requirements for wires.
But it doesn't have to be.
No, I'm on, we're on television. If I wanted to sit and name you the places there, they're there. And we drive by them every day. And they're travel trailers. Little campers.
And they're not anchored properly.
Sure-ish.
Oh, forget that. I mean, we're trying to make a law here.
Yeah, I know, I know.
So I, Bill, we don't have to sell this tonight. Just let's think about that as you drive around Pottel. Take a look at that.
Is there a six month limit? Do you could park one for six months, maybe in the summer?
I think.
Oh, there are regulations on temporary while you're building too.
Sure.
Sid's an expert on that.
Unfortunately, I know.
Yeah. He had to coerce the DRB to give him a second permit on that.
And he obeyed the law. Half the people who taught him how don't even know what the law is or care about it.
Right.
Well, just to, just to make it more, you know, to, to obfuscate further. You know, there's a lot of discussion going on about how to treat so-called tiny homes and tiny houses. So, and, you know, an awful lot of those are, are mounted on wheels.
Wheels.
Yeah, at which point the distinction between a tiny house and a travel, travel trailer becomes.
Always lost.
Does Shasberry have some kind of? I, it seems to me, and this just proves I have to get a light, I actually watched one of their planning commission meetings or select war meetings. And the tiny home thing came up.
Yeah.
It was a couple of years ago.
I know, you're, you're right. Yeah, it was talked about in Shas because they asked me about.
Yeah, same.
I mean, my, my only guidance to them was, was, you know, if it's, if it is on wheels, you know, then if you have regulations for campers or travel trailers, RVs, you know, how long you can, you know, where you can.
Ship all under that.
In a lot, that, if it's, if it's, you know, anchored, you know, permanently.
Pretty much permanently.
Then you treat it as a house.
Yeah.
So, but I think that's the way most towns do it, but it is something people struggle with lovely.
Sometimes in eastern part of Massachusetts are permitting tiny homes on the same lot as a principal residence as kind of an in-law apartment.
Well, you could do that, you could do that as an accessory dwelling unit in Vermont. You could call it an accessory dwelling unit.
It could be, you know, they could be very charming.
You can go on YouTube, you can go on YouTube and see people living out back in Montana in these things. Snow up to the eaves, perfectly comfortable. If you, if you don't want to hit yourself.
If you're not going to the bathroom at night. If you're not claustrophobic.
Yeah.
There are sections of Oregon, because of the amount of homelessness, are encouraging people
Exactly.
Small homes. On the corners of that property.
And then, and it is nice. Yeah, it's very nice.
Better than living on the street in the tents. Right, on the bridge.
I would say, you know, that there's, there's definitely, there's definitely a place for them. And I mean, you know, in, in a way, it's a, it's kind of a, we, in, in encouraging, I mean, I think that for a long time, maybe we've overbuilt our houses. You know, we've built houses a lot bigger than we actually need. Now we're kind of like.
Mansions up on the hill.
Now we're building.
Ronnie's like, ah, please, Mr. Not here to defend himself.
Mr. Basile's not here.
Ronnie should be waiting to defend himself. He should be weighing out on this.
He will be.
So the, the only other thing I wanted to raise, I know you had a question on the mobile home parks.
Yes.
Was that the, the current bylaws reference the town sanitary code. You know, anything now has to be, you know, state water supply.
Yeah, we should take that down.
So I didn't know if you would agree. So I didn't know if you had any special reason or effect.
State, you're not complying with state law.
Okay. I, I drafted that in there, so. And then, eight, eight point four, I, the only thing I noticed that, like, the, the matrix, you know, I was, I was like, well, it didn't. It didn't list mobile home parks under any of the, the districts.
Conditional and, and village.
But, oh, was it in the matrix?
Conditional and village.
But it, it did, it did list in the, in the text of the bylaws.
Except in village.
It, it was, it was, it was allowed in, in, in RR one and RR two.
Where it's not permitted in the matrix.
Where it's not allowed in the matrix.
So I, I don't know if that's an oversight, I do remember that being very controversial. When, last time we changed the bylaws prohibiting mobile home parks from proliferating in RR two and RR one. And we were pretty adamant about it, we voted on it, we changed it, did we fail to take it out of the text maybe?
Okay, so where do we want them?
No, no. Where, we decided a long time ago, I mean, obviously open it up to everybody, but village.
Only, only.
Only village?
Only allowed in the village.
That's technically what it is now, even though our text says it can be considered. And I think that's the exact word. Five point one, point four, point six in RR two, mobile home parks are subject to review under the town supervision or subdivision regulations and subsection eight point four of this bylaw. Consideration should be given to increased density in existing parks or abutting areas meeting the requirements of eight point four. So they're saying add on to what you've got first before you spill over into.
But I thought we just said about half an hour ago that all the, a lot, several of the mobile home parks are in the flood zone, I mean.
Well, how about a new one? This is what we're talking about here.
In the flood zone?
Well, no, no, I'm not talking about any flood zone, I'm just talking about the fact that in our matrix and land use or land development, RR one has no, not permitted villages, conditional, and RR two is not permitted. But as Jim points out, you go to the text in each section.
Yeah, no, no.
And it says consideration should be given.
Yeah, yeah.
And the other thing, I, I wonder if we came up against a state law that.
We have to allow mobile home parks somewhere in the town.
Yeah, it is true that you have to allow a mobile home park somewhere.
You have to allow.
In, in some district.
You have to allow wind turbines, someone or two, and we got that. Way up past here.
But, I mean, look, the mobile home park one is, is, is a little tricky, but, you know, you could, you could just provide for it in the village or the RR one or the RR two.
But I think you want to where there's sewer and water, for sure.
Exactly, and the village is the likely thing, and that was the, as we developed the sewer and water in town, that was one of the driving forces to change the bylaw where it was conditional in all three of those things until about, you know, nine years ago, eight years ago, when we changed it. So just more food for thought for everybody about how to correct that. Do we want to, uh, limit it to the village area zone?
I don't think you want to make it a conditional use of the village, I think it should be permitted.
Where's the twenty-five acres in the village?
Well, it, it does, it does say that, that provision, or the way I rewrote the dimensional standards. So, because the bylaw had twenty-five acres, but then there was also some reference to cluster development. So I said, or the minimum lot size required for a planned unit development based on the density of the zoning district and the number of dwelling units.
Where were you reading that?
I, my draft, section eight point four point two, dimensional standards and requirement for sites.
Yeah.
So if you had a, a smaller lot and developed it as a planned unit development under those regs, you could do a mobile home park on a smaller lot.
You know, as I read through this section.
We would want to redraft this to take out the words, we want to prevent stagnant pools of water, I mean, come on, that's nineteen forty-five language.
Yeah.
The mosquitoes were coming.
Reading mosquitoes, hilarious. Yeah, we might want to change that segment.
Yeah, I would redraft. Four point, four, eight point four point two.
Megan, would you start to ask for?
Well, as I read this whole thing, I, I don't want to be snotty or anything, but I was like, boy, some of the trailer parks that I've visited are like, the, the homes are not, you know, forty feet between adjacent mobile homes, or what?
Some are probably grandfather prior to changing.
This was, this was, this was done with no zoning here.
Yeah.
All right, I got you, okay. That was my question, I just, I mean, we're not gonna go in and, you can't go back and say, well, you gotta change all this.
This is, this is really.
The whole point of non-conforming uses.
I see, okay.
Right.
So, so if somebody's gonna make a, you know, like redevelopment of a home park or make a major change, that may have to.
They have to conform.
To the branch of the performance. But, yeah, the existing ones, you know, pretty much they, they are subject to, you know, other ordinances.
And that's why you see a lot of them sit there forever, and they don't change them, they don't move them off that footprint. They keep them on there because they know what they do. They have to put down slabs or build it up thirty-six inches or whatever the case may be, it gets expensive. So they're left there, so that's part of what we're dealing with, is these aging structures.
Just to bring a point, though, we, panel did not have zoning problems, seven.
No, and they were putting them right on top of each other.
You know, sure. I don't know how this happened, just, yeah.
All happened because of the track.
Well, true.
Need housing for the track.
Need housing, I quit.
We still need housing.
Yes, we do.
Absolutely, we need a lot of housing.
We need a lot of housing.
Yes, we do.
There's a little more structure to the approach.
Yeah, you know, the, I, and the only, in, in C, I tried to re, re, update the language on the setbacks and the distance between the mobile homes to make it easier to understand, because I, I was having a hard time trying to sketch out and figure what the existing dimensional standards actually meant. So I tried to carry over that forty-foot separation theme.
Yeah.
And, and likewise with accessory buildings. So while there may not be internal lot lines, no, no building or accessory building from one mobile home site could be closer than twenty feet to another mobile home.
So they can't just put up shed.
Shed, 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 which is existent.
No, right, yeah, okay.
So we tried to clear that up, and otherwise I kept the dimensional standards the same. And, and then I, I just reorganized some of the, the, the parking and street lighting stuff. I was, I was a little bit concerned, and, and I played around with the language some, I don't know if I've got it right or as good as it can be. But under eight point four point three, I don't know what it was called in the current one, but I call it, there were streets and parking. So that, the, this anticipates, the bylaw does now, if, if there are off-street parking provided, so each mobile home has a place off the street to park their vehicle, that the, that the hard-surfaced or paved road be at least thirty feet wide, which is really wide for any street, let alone in a compact development like a mobile home park. That would, to me, just be a waste of space and also encourage potentially high-speed driving.
Drag racing.
As an area.
So I.
They're very short, you could only go fast, eight feet.
So I just cut that to twenty feet, I mean, twenty feet is, is a, is kind of a standard for a village. A village street, you have to drive slow, but you can add. And then it says if on-street parking is permitted, so if, if, I guess if, if, most of the parking doesn't occur on lot, but on the street instead of off the street, it was calling for forty feet, which I was like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reading now.
That's like, that's, you could land, you could land an airplane on it.
Yeah.
You know, so I changed that to thirty-two, which, you know, if everybody parked their car along the street, it would narrow it down to like, you know, sixteen feet, which is a little too narrow, but I don't think that you'd get, you know, bumper to bumper cars along the street. And again, I don't think you want that big of an expansive road in a, in a park. I mean, it's a lot to maintain and.
Where do the park owners want that?
They're losing rent money.
Yeah.
How many trails can we put in there?
Can't charge for a forty.
Three fifty a shot.
So anyway, those, those are the changes I made in that section, and then, oh, yeah. Some, like Sid was recognizing some of the outdated language, admit there's still some, I guess, in eight point four point four about health hazards and insect breeding areas. But some of the stuff that I, I just, you know, had to take out were, were things like, you know, you know, provide for garbage disposal or have an incinerator on the site.
The old fashioned burning marrow.
I know, like, in every mobile home park, that's their own incinerator. I think we would pretty quickly follow the state health, air quality folks, but.
I can show you a couple. We had one growing up, it was a fifty-gallon drum out in the backyard, right, where we got rid of everything.
You know, again, there was, there was some updated language there in requiring connections to the sewer system where it's available, and if you're limiting.
Where are you now?
Oh, that's just an eight point four point four.
Why'd you cross off NA approved by the health officer for safe and sanitary means of disposal?
Well, let's see, oh, carbon.
Yeah, the end of A.
Or other, well, I didn't know if, if you wanted to assign that responsibility to the health officer. And the default otherwise would be enforcement by the zoning administrator.
Let's ask Mike, Mike Gardner.
Is he the health officer?
No, no.
Did we hire a health officer?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, he was hired.
We have as the deputy health officer.
We have, we have a health officer, no.
Leo Hagerty.
Yeah.
Correct. But they did announce him as, announced him as a deputy. They gave him a promotion already. Okay, so I would be interested in hearing from both Mike Gardner and Leo Hagerty about whether some of that language.
Well, you could, you could, you know, I mean, my, I think my way of looking at it was, that's what the zoning says you have to have. And if you don't have it, the zoning administrator can. Is what I would say, you don't have that. If it becomes an actual health issue, then you really bring the health officer.
The most powerful person is the health officer, because he has to go through the state to be approved.
Okay.
Otherwise, the other person's just at random, but the health officer has more authority through the sanction of the state.
It's also for cases like this, why I wanted that panel to be one person to have both positions, but the select board disagreed with that much in the cloud.
I got it. And then I didn't, I didn't really, I didn't really change anything else of consequence in section eight point four. Oh, I did, there was a provision for enforcement and penalties, and wherever that showed up in here, I, I just updated the statutory reference and also noted. And we don't, the, the fine, now the maximum fine by statute used to be fifty dollars and now it's two hundred, so I just updated it.
Where, where? Oh, down the bottom.
Eight point four point eight enforcement penalties. It's not a big change, it's just kind of updating the consistent statute.
Keeping up with inflation.
Yeah, so.
Okay, that's any of the ordinances or bylaws within the mobile home parks we're talking about.
Right, yeah, that, yeah, there's a separate section on enforcement generally.
Okay, it's not the normal hundred dollar.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know, well, it's, it, the same thing would apply, it's the same, it's the same enforcement remedy.
Right.
But, you know, if you want, there's nothing wrong with having a separate mention of it here.
Yeah, and I think the select board ultimately sets the.
Well, it gets, it gets, yeah, I mean, it's not, it's cut and dry, it's not, it's not like, it's not like the zoning administrator is likely to go and issue a violation notice and then, and then, you know, say, okay, you violated the ordinance for ten days, so pay us two thousand dollars or something like that. Those, those things are pretty much always work their way through the development review.
There's some negotiation.
And then.
We had a case.
It usually, it probably costs you more, as much in legal fees as you're gonna recover in the, in, in any fines. But, because it's, it's, it's something where the lawyers almost always gonna be involved before you go collect a fine. I don't know if you guys collected, have collected a lot, maybe you have more experience with it, but.
We have only one.
Yeah. Return it, Mr. Gardner, boost. Okay.
So, okay, we'll get to the good stuff here in a minute. So eight point five.
I've been sitting here on tinsel hooks.
Eight point five. What's the good stuff?
Oh, performance standards. Eight point five, protection of streams and water bodies. So, you know, and that one, it, it references, you know, streams or water courses shown on the town plan of development as a drainage way. I mean, I think they just say, you know, stream or water course and, and kind of leave it at that. You know, that, we, we, as I said, we need to define what those things are perhaps, but.
Yeah.
And then, then the, the zoning administrator is the one that should be getting applications and referring them to the DRB as opposed to the, the DRB.
Correct.
So.
There's a story to lie, but we won't go into it tonight, we don't have enough time.
All right, so other than minor wording, that one didn't really change. Prohibition of disposal of hazardous wastes, I, I don't think that I've changed that.
That's fine.
And then clean, clean fill, I didn't change that. And then, so performance standards.
Wait, why'd you cross off the DRB asking the planning commission for interpretation or input? Unnecessary, is that, because that's a given?
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's, it is, it's a given, I guess I, I don't know why it would have been just there under protection of streams and water bodies.
I think there's a general provision in the present bylaw that says in case of interpretive difficulties, the enforcement authority shall ask the planning.
Planning commission.
For guidance.
That's right. And that includes both the zoning administrator and the DRB.
And don't ask me to find it.
Yeah, no, okay, well, I can make a note of that to make sure that that has survived, so.
Oh, you don't have to, no.
So the, so now the, so, back, stepping back just for a moment, but we're talking about performance standards. So, you know, the performance standards were, are in the existing bylaws, exactly how they're to be used and applied is not really super clear. It, it did reference them in the context of conditional uses. And in the current bylaw, almost, you know, any, any, most all commercial uses were conditional uses. And I think that, you know, we had talked about limiting the number of conditionally permitted uses to those types of uses where there really might be some pretty more complex impacts that would need to be looked at under the character of the area criteria. But to have a site plan review required for, by the DRB for permitted uses that are multifamily and commercial and industrial and so on. But the, the, you know, the, so, but, so the, anything that is conditional use, I think we basically automatically dump that into looking at these performance standards. So the conditional uses reference these performance standards as they do now, there's just fewer uses. But for, for clarification on some of the site plan requirements, like, like lighting and stormwater and screening and landscaping, and especially flipping a few ahead to section eight point eight point one zero, building, siting and design, those are all like really site plan things. And so the site plan section references those sections to the performance standards and says that those should be considered for new, for new development, requiring site plan review.
I'd like us to have in mind that we want to take another look at the measure of noise and.
Okay.
What the standard there should be.
I, I checked a couple of towns, and they vary a little bit, but it's not, you're not far out of the range of what most other towns have, but you could certainly do that. And I guess you also have to go out and enforce that by. And I guess you also have to go out and enforce that by a decibel meter.
That's the problem, because you can get one and you're not all over, doesn't it?
No, you're not. So some towns do have.
Probably.
So, so, you know, so again, so these performance standards are going to apply to conditional uses generally. All these performance standards. There's just not as many conditional uses. And a number of them will be used to clarify what the site plan standards are. And, you know, what it's really trying to get at is, is by making a lot of these uses, permitted uses requiring site plan approval, it takes a lot of the subjectivity out of the, out of the application process. It says, yeah, these are permitted if you submit a good site plan. And the performance standards are really intended to provide guidance on what good site plan is. So instead of just saying site plan review is required and you need to include a lighting plan and, you know, careful placement of the building and provide for pedestrian access. These standards are intended to say, okay, by, you know, an appropriate lighting plan, we mean this. And by, you know, good building, siting and design, we mean this. So it may, in a way, seem more restrictive, but it's really intended to be just the opposite. It's saying, if you follow these standards, you're good to go. You know, and so, so that's, that's kind of what we're trying to get with this. So, again, a lot of these were existing and I didn't change very much. Some of them, I did make some recommendations. So the lighting one, tried to be a little bit clearer on that. You know, the old one, there was some references to off-site glare and things like that. There's some, you know, better language now about, you know, cutoff and low glare lighting and eliminating the height. So to try to, you know, to try to make sure that the focus is on lighting what you're actually trying to light and not the neighbor's property or the street. You can take another look at the noise standards. I didn't change anything there.
No, I, I recognize that. And DRB struggled with that in terms of a motocross track in town. And which is right downtown. And we really.
Well, you know, when you get into, you know, you get into noise stuff, it's, because I worked on a a noise ordinance for a town a few years back that, you know, takes us to a whole different level. And it gets pretty complicated because noise, you know, noise is more than just sound levels. It's also the type of noise, you know, it's, it's like percussive noise versus, you know.
Soothing or aggravating.
Sound of a dump truck. Lit. Kailgate banging against the bank is something really percussive.
Can I ask what they had going on that created the need for your services to take this section like this to a whole nother level?
Yes.
Did they have some kind of?
Lot of second home owners.
A lot of dump trucks slamming.
No, it was more, it was more a, a, a shooting range.
Yes. Say no more. I know what you're talking about.
In editorial note, Jim, in eight point eight point eight, where you have the second paragraph. You take out the letter A. If you don't have a sub-paragraph B, you don't have a sub-paragraph A.
Oh, okay, yeah. I like those changes.
I think we got Sid and Megan, boy, I'll tell you.
Sid's much better than me. He's a champ.
All right, eight point nine.
Yes, so, well, well, let's see.
So we skip.
Well, we still, we got, no, we got good stuff here still.
I'm sorry.
I get the best stuff left.
Okay.
Okay.
So we did know it did noise.
I, I, I.
We tabled noise.
Eight point eight point four, you know, it was dust, fly ash, fumes, gases, odors, smoke and vapors, which is a little cumbersome.
It's on air quality.
It's air quality.
That's what we call it now, yes.
Vapors, that's what we used to get back.
And a new name today. Now kitter vaping.
So I, I, I just put in some standard language on air quality. You know, I didn't specifically reference the air pollution control regulations of the agency of natural resources, but we could put that back in. You know, it's just, it just kind of, this is just standards. Odors, fumes, gases, dust, smoke. I mean, sometimes those things are a little bit hard to evaluate. But they're, this is, these are, this is one that would really only apply to those conditional uses, those food conditional uses.
But natural resources does oversee all of that, right?
Well, they have air pollution control regulations that, yeah, that apply to certain things and certain uses.
So we could default to that.
That time.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You know, water, water quality, nothing really major change there. Just kind of standardized the language. Solid waste disposal, explosives and fire protection. I kept that the same. I, the, the stormwater runoff and erosion control, I kind of merged a couple of sections there with your stormwater erosion control. I referenced the stormwater management program of the Department of Environmental Conservation.
Can we, can we just go back to solid waste disposal? Can we explicitly say again, even though it's redundant, that it's, you know, not permitted to dispose of construction waste in the woods like over at White Oaks, like we found the other day? Or, or garbage and over on, it's not permitted.
So by construction waste, you mean if somebody dismantles a building, they just dump it off the side?
Yeah, people do this. There's a lot of construction waste tossed and there's a lot of household garbage tossed in the woods. I just, we know that. I just wanted to say it twice and again.
Or, or think of some language to add to this.
Yes.
I can, I can add something about.
To idiotship.
Say, say, construct, construction.
Construction.
Construction waste must be disposed of.
And household.
I think I still got a follower.
What?
Just dumping period is not.
Yeah, I mean, there's different ordinances.
Right, right, right. Yeah, it's all, yeah.
If you've got, I can see where if you've got a new development, it's got a bunch of construction going on and there's construction debris that you might want to add a sentence to this one talking about, you know, property disposal of construction debris.
Whatever. I mean, I, it's illegal already. People just look down and thought. One more place where it's pointed out that it's not legal.
In fact, don't they have memos on Facebook that say, if you have something left over that you can't dispose of, take it to power.
Well, they made the same remark in Sunderland. So Sunderland did feel that way.
Yeah, it's all over the country.
It's not, it's not, you're not, you guys aren't just that.
All over the country.
Rural, urban. Oh, no, I had, I've had disposal complaints, trash disposal complaints. Oh, absolutely, yeah. One of my most memorable ones was in Manchester, so sure. So, under the stormwater stuff and erosion control, stormwater runoff and erosion control, I merged those two sections and referenced the stormwater management program because they're the ones who really oversee all that stuff now with construction. I took out the references to the Soil Conservation Service, which doesn't actually exist anymore. And, you know, that, that stormwater management program really, really is the one to go to.
Right.
Then screening and landscaping requirements, kept that pretty much the same. And then the, the one that I really wanted to point you guys to.
This is me beating.
Was eight, eight point eight point ten. So talk about eight point eight point ten quickly now. But, but I wanted to, I wanted you guys to look at it and consider, consider it closely. Because, you know, while the first couple of sentences there were from the existing section on building and site design, remember, you know, this would apply now to, you know, anything that requires site plan approval or conditional use approval. So, you know, it talks about natural terrain and vegetation. Then the second one goes to that point that was raised earlier about design. You know, utilize an architectural design that complements the rural environment is compatible with surrounding land uses. So a bit subjective. Considerations shall be given to building height and size, roof shape, pitch and direction, exterior materials and textures, color and architectural features and accessory structures. Again, that stuff can all be a little bit subjective. But, but, you know, at least it gives you something to, to have a conversation with.
That's identical.
Unless you wanted to, you know, really get into, you know, like a design review, which you probably don't.
On the screening and landscaping stuff, might you want to say something about not planting invasives?
Why you don't want to do that?
Barbary and new ones and filling up the woods.
Yeah.
Just pointing out.
Yeah, actually, we can, well, that's a good point. Yeah, so eight point eight point nine, we can say avoid invasive species.
Sharpen your pencil.
Like, lose strife in your water feature. So.
Because Jim didn't change it, we can certainly still take a look at it and add things to it.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, he's, he's covering kind of the highlights.
Well, I'm making, I'm making notes on stuff that people say, though, and I'll, I'll add those for further discussion. So, so now, in the, in the current bylaws, there was a lot of language that for commercial uses, especially in village and commercial areas, was encouraging in a kind of a Tousway, you know, multi-story buildings. And it was, it was a little, it was a little hard to, to understand. So I just, I, I put some language in here that talked about that and a mix of uses. So it says, commercial developments in the village district. And, you know, the purpose of the village district, again, is, is trying to encourage more compact, mixed-use, walkable development. So encourage to include a mix of uses, including residential uses in buildings with two or more stories. So it doesn't say you have to, but, you know, if you've got a, if you've got a commercial building in the village district, you know, you're going to build a building with a, with a, with a retail store. It says, hey, you know, we would really like it if you added a second floor and added some housing there too. Or something to get a mix of uses. Then in the village and rural residential one district, paragraph D there says, principled buildings shall be located as close to the front line as permitted by front yard setback requirements and physical conditions unless an alternative location is approved by the DRB. And I think that's, that's one that goes hand in hand with the parking. So it says, you know, push your building toward the front of the lot, you know. It makes it a more attractive streetscape. It makes it more pedestrian friendly. It makes room for the parking on the side and the rear, as opposed to if you push the park, the building, you know, further back. So it, it gives you some openings, you know, if somebody has a real compelling reason because of the, you know, the topography of the lot or some other reason that you could do it differently.
What about handicap parking?
Yeah, well, in the, in the parking, in the parking section, it specifically makes a provision for that, to put parking in the front, right next to the front door. Yep.
But other than that, they would, they would be required to come before the DRB to not park in the back or the side?
Well, yeah, they, they would actually, yeah, I mean, I said, yeah, they would have to make a case to you.
Okay.
Why it should be allowed.
Except for those things we talked about earlier.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, they could do that, but yeah, if they came in with a parking lot in the front.
They're going to have to have some pretty good reasons.
You would say no unless there's real compelling reason. And I mean, there might be. You know, I don't know if you have that, but. But that, you know, I mean, it's, you know, it's a, it's a design aesthetic. It's, it's like I said, it's, it's currently what's favored. I, I didn't put that in for the, you know, for the RR two district where you do allow some non-residential uses. But that's, you know, a different, more rural district where you might want the buildings further back. So, and then added a little provision E for, you know, landscaping for the, the front yards, which is basically going to be the area between the building and or parking lot in the road, if the parking lot's on the side. And then F notes reinforces the, the parking area location thing. It refers back to section, the parking that talks about side and rear and landscaping and parking areas. And then, yeah, I, I think it's, G is one that's often overlooked, so I always put it in.
Good idea.
Safe and convenient walkways shall be provided between all parking areas and buildings and between pedestrian ways on or along public streets and buildings. It always, it always, there isn't, like, when I first started doing planning work and was doing reviews of site plans, it always struck me that, that like these shopping centers and stores would come into these huge parking lots.
Nowhere to walk.
And absolutely no place for pedestrians. I was like, that's where most pedestrian activity occurs. A place is getting from your car to the storefront. And that's a place where nobody makes provision for, for pedestrian improvement.
Right. A lot of them never make that.
If you go down, if you go down to Virginia where new development is just. There's acres of parking lot, freeways and intersections and a single sidewalk.
Yeah, it's.
Unbelievable.
Yeah, it's, it is, it is interesting.
Everything to move, live there, you have to cut your legs off.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's true. And there's, yeah, there's also, yeah, there's a lot of places where, where, you know, there'll be a building and parking areas and there'll be a sidewalk that goes from the, the front or side main entrance of the building. And it kind of angles out along the, the parking lot and then it just ends.
Yeah.
Because the driveway, you know, flares into like a right, left turn lanes and everything. And I was like, well, how am I supposed to get to the street sidewalk now? You know, and I was like, so I don't, so I, I think it's, you know, good to have that in there. Okay, so, all right, so now there was this, section eight point nine, and there was this whole thing on recycle, quote, recycle facilities, which now.
We had to use this when we permitted TAM.
Oh, okay.
But TAM's now been bought by somebody else and there won't be another recycling facility in town, is my guess. Except the town operated one.
It could, it could, yeah, well, it could well be, but, so I.
Maybe, maybe we'll get it together and people will start really.
So you, you kind of struck all of eight point nine point one.
Well, I, I, I.
Through E.
Yeah, I, I got, I got, I kept the stuff in about, well, junk, you know, junk vehicles, scrap waste, decommissioned motor vehicles, all that kind of stuff. So the recycling facilities or the recycle facilities, I thought if you're going to have that, if, if, that's a use, a specific use that.
Right.
You, maybe you want to add that to a, a district and have standards for a recycling facility. But then I was like, well, they all have to be certified by, you know, the state. And they can't be certified unless they're essentially approved by the, in the local solid waste management plan. So there's a, there's kind of a lot of stuff already in place about, about recycling facilities. But if you want to have a section for recycling facilities, my suggestion would be figure out where you want it in the town.
And put it in that.
Put it in that district.
You want poster.
Yeah, and then, and then make it conform to all the performance standards.
You guys agree with that?
Do you agree with?
I thought I waited, you were chatting.
Where's with the recycling facility?
No, we were talking about junk, you know, motor vehicles.
I thought we, we allowed, yeah.
So if you're, if you're going, if you're going to put. So if you're, if you're going, if you're going to put it in a, what he's suggesting is, figure out what district you want to have any recycled facilities.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And move the language that he's left to that, uh, district.
The largest retail, I mean, the largest people in the east just bought TAM. You think they're going to do something here? I mean, why not?
Why, wouldn't they?
Yeah. I mean, he's trying to buy, you know.
And this is, that could be why they bought it.
Because you wouldn't put one in Williamstown and this is close to Williamstown.
Yeah, what, what's next door to a racetrack? Uh, you know, these guys from Lake Placid to the turnpike, uh, these are monsters. These, these people are, this man's a smart man.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes, very much so. In Vermont Business Magazine, he writes a really big, big story about he's taking all the crap for the lower end after it's done. Why don't they go to the manufacturers and start there? Make them be more bi-aggradable.
That's good, yeah.
I mean, it's a hell of a good article. This guy's smart.
Yeah.
And he didn't buy this little place for nothing.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
If he could open that north gate, I mean, he's got, he's got political clout.
Well, he's, he's going to be pretty limited though, because we see that, that my understanding is you can't have a solid waste facility in a flood hazard area or a river quarter, so.
Why, why is, why is two of the biggest buildings in Williamstown parked in the racetrack? For over a year?
I have no idea.
No, I mean, there's a lot of, you're probably.
Wait, wait, what, say that again? Two of the biggest buildings in Williamstown?
Yeah, yeah.
Are parked at the racetrack?
They're, they're torn down and they're ground up and, uh, oh, you ever heard of the science center?
Oh.
Sex and the racetrack.
Got that in here.
A DRB permit.
I've heard a little bit about.
The selectmen's.
Of course.
I've heard a little bit about that, that that, yeah, that that was probably something that, that wasn't consistent with, uh, solid waste certification or plan, but I, I have no direct.
The whole binary is in there, the acres of the binary. You people living in town, you don't really know what goes on here.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right.
I asked you a lot of questions, but we're on television.
I, I, no, I, I.
Go ahead, ask.
I, I had, I had heard that there was storage of, um, you know, a lot of demolition debris stored.
Brockman Science Center sits there, uh, two theater, podcasting business.
Material from Bennington as well.
Right, yes.
That, that.
Okay, we need to look at this.
But I, I don't.
Walkers look, go ahead.
Outside my, outside my valley way.
Yeah.
Um, and let's see, blah, 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 blah. Oh, signs, eight point ten, signs. So I, um, I just cleaned up the language a little bit on signs. I didn't really, um, I didn't really change very much. I tried to keep it.
Just have the requirement for variance.
Tried, tried to keep it, yeah.
Yeah, that's what you were brought up before, right?
Tried to keep it similar. Well, yeah, I mean, DMV shall provide permits for certain signs that meet the following requirements by granting zoning variance with conditions, which is a sentence that makes no sense whatsoever.
No sense whatsoever.
So, yeah, so I, I rewrote that, um, to, to follow the proper permitting channels according to.
We have a sign permit coming up tomorrow night?
Well, you're going to have to grant a zoning variance with conditions.
Well. Our, 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 we are being much more.
Going for it.
Oh, don't hurt this guy.
Uh, so other than that, though, I, I think I, I, oh, I, I added a, a sentence, a, a section on lighting, just, just saying indirect lighting is prohibited and in no instance shall lighting cause glare on neighboring properties or create dangerous conditions on highways. Again, it's pretty standard, because unfortunately, a lot of times, yeah, um, uh, roadside signs that have lights that reduce visibility for drivers, which creates.
Yeah, the, the North Pile and Post Office has a greatly glaring light that prevents you from seeing what you're doing when you drive.
Oh, yeah.
But that's because they're.
They think that's for security.
Yeah, the lady across the street, so drug deals.
Stop it. That's not it.
No, there's probably alternate ways to do that.
No, I'm not correct.
But, um, so that's, so that's my notes on section eight, eight. Now, there's, as I said, there's, there's, we went over really quickly tonight, but there's, so there's stuff in there that definitely is worth, uh.
Yeah, we've got to look back.
Chewing over.
Yep.
So, I'll, I'll take some of the, what notes I got from tonight from people's comments and integrate them and then add it to the, to the composite draft that we're building and have that for the next time. And then I'll also try to get, um, the subdivision regs folded in for the next time. And I don't know if Michael's going to have the flood regs or not, but if he does, we'll move them too. And at that point, other than definitions, it will be pretty much complete.
It will be, won't it?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Few little adds and adds, but that'd be most of it.
Which leaves us about a year and a half away from adoption. Would you, um, make sure Michael Gardner's here for the next meeting? Especially if Jim's going to bring in language that's going to impact the subdivision reg. We're not, not quite, almost.
I will, uh.
One hour meetings.
No.
You gotta, you gotta have one hour meetings, God. I made a motion we not have meetings in excess of one hour length.
Or if we do, second hour, come to the chairs.
Then you'll have the same bylaws for the next five years.
You just said two one hour.
So.
So the next, the next meeting, what's the date of the next meeting?
March of twenty seventeen.
Sid won't go to the next three meetings because we made him stay two.
That's right. Put in my time.
What is the, uh?
See in March.
Who's got there?
Seventeen, he's going backwards.
Six o'clock comes quick.
Seventeen?
Seventeen? Yeah.
Is that the third Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Seventeen, ten, yeah, third, ten.
Seven to seventeen.
All right, yeah, that's perfect, a week from Christmas. Nothing, nothing says Merry Christmas like a planning commission meeting.
I'm going to be away, but we have, I think I'll be back by noon on the seventeenth, so I should be able to make it.
We have in the past, I, I'd prefer to have the meeting if you don't mind, but we have in the past skipped our December meeting and.
In the spirit of.
In the spirit of.
Way out of balance.
Good feelings. But let's plan on the seventeenth for now.
At seven, right?
At seven.
Yeah.
I can't, I was driving over here.
Thank you very much. Well, we got a lot, that was a good discussion, we got a lot to think about. No, we're not, we're not, not yet, hang on, we're almost done.
Oh, yes.
I just want to ask a question about, um, what do you think of the new venue?
I think we ought to have all our meetings here.
Anybody else?
Can we get some?
Who'd be against this?
I'd miss it, can we get better chairs?
No one.
We want padded chairs.
Yeah, I know, I do miss the padded chairs.
I gotta see if there's any mold in the chairs.
Bring our own chairs.
Bring your own.
Oh, thank you, I did, see that?
Bring your own. So I considered, I considered the Solomon Library, but they are out of there at eight o'clock. So we would have to make.
Perfect.
That'd be great, let's go to what?
Yeah, starting at about seven forty-five.
I do have a key because I'm a volunteer.
Oh, God.
But I, I'm fine with this for now. And I'll check with Jason Alansky to see if all those Tuesdays that we are going to occupy will be available.
We have our water board meetings also at, at the rescue squad, which are very nice.
The rescue squad on route to the Legion. They have a big room there?
With this.
Yeah.
Beautiful place. You guys have never been in there?
Oh, yeah.
I've never been to a meeting there.
We have a water board meeting there once.
Yeah, we have water board meetings there.
And there was also a, some kind of planning meeting there.
He said water board, the head.
Yeah.
The camera's still.
Water board in the district.
We have a DRB. So, um, who, who's in charge of that? Could one of you guys find out if we could on the third Tuesday of each month, if we could?
Patricia, you need a new manager.
Well, I just, look at, I've, until the new town hall is built, I think we ought to stay out of there.
That could be.
It's easier for you though, isn't it? If we have them over.
My children will be on social security when that town hall gets built.
Yeah, we're going to start in January if you're coming in.
Okay, all right.
We got to get out of here.
Now, now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm so moved.
Okay, anyway.
Who did the second?
Um, everybody, everybody, everybody. I'll take, I'll take the.